Here. Art Aiken.
Here.
Jason Craska.
Here.
Al Karasik.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Christopher Attic will not be present and Ken Utter will not be present this evening.
Okay, next slide I'm on your agenda. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
We introduce the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with the agenda items, there's a lot of new faces in the room. Let's just take a minute to find out who everybody is.
Hi, I'm Don Flores, resident of Somerville for nineteen years. I was on the zoning board last year. I took my first, my second in-person meeting with the crew. I am a marketing consultant and a motorcycle driver.
I'm Brian Gudinski, I joined the board, I guess, a year, two years, two years. This is the first in-person meeting. I've been in town for twenty years. My parents have been here since eighteen hundred. I'm an actor. That's what I do, is when I have time to do stuff, obviously. But, that's it.
Eric Delres, I'm the attorney, I've been in town for about seven years, high school years, so, went to McIlroy, very kind of road. Yeah, so, been on the board since the beginning of this year. First of all, since.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry, what? Roberto Carpanet, I served nine years on the Borough Council and I'm a member of the Somerset County Library Commission and a member of the zoning board.
I'm Graham McLaughlin, pretty much a resident all my life. I have business in town, but I don't find my son a student.
Richard O'Neil, lifelong resident, I don't think I'm on the board, I don't know how many years left, someday we'll figure it out. I was fire chief, I was in the fire department, acted forty-four years, I still belong to the fire department as a member of it, through the museum, thanks to that nature. I like the town, I love it.
Art Adair, I've been a lifelong resident of town. My family's been here since George Washington was president. My grandparents were fought in the Civil War in this town. Been on this board, I guess, about thirty-eight years and a hell of other boards. For all the years I've been on, for about forty-eight years. I just really love this town and want to continue doing what we're doing.
Dan Javits, I'm an architect. Been in town since nineteen seventy-three, been on this board for, I don't know, maybe twenty-five years, something like that. And unless anyone else brings it up, I'd like to find out if everyone here got their shots. And if you haven't gotten your shots, please put a mask on. That's all I'd say about it.
And I live, I've lived in the town about as long as arts can go on the board. So, fireman, rescue squad, working hills with township in the co-office. Somerville's just me, in my book, not leaving.
I'm Brian Gudinski, I lived here as a resident for forty-one years, but I grew up right outside of town. I've been on the planning board since nineteen eighty-nine and I also am chairman of Somerset County Planning Board. And I've been on that board since nineteen ninety-two.
Hi, I'm Karen Gudinski, I'm the planning board attorney. We have our office down the street on East Main. I've been conflict council or planning board council for about the past six years.
Hello, it's Michael Cole. I've been planner and engineer for both boards since two thousand and five and I truly love Borough.
Dennis Sullivan, I came to Somerville in nineteen seventy-three to teach school.
Another new member.
I toyed in the school district for thirty-five years before my grandson was born and I retired. I've served on the Borough Council since nineteen ninety-five and then my third year was back.
Good evening, my name is Clifford Gibbons. On the, I was, like my colleague to the left, I was conflict council for the zoning board for a number of years and I've been honored to be appointed as a zoning board attorney beginning this year. So, it's a pleasure to be with you all. I agree that it's a lovely town and I'm looking forward to serving you.
Peter Gudinski, I've been in town since nineteen ninety with a degree of hiatus and I'm an architect by training, also teaching in that village. Started on parking and traffic and have served on the planning board, I think it's about a long time.
Long time.
Yes, a very long time.
Oh, my name is Larry Cleveland. I'm on the planning board and the Environment Commission, I'm a liaison to both. I've been on the planning board for about twenty-one years. Been on the Environment for about seventeen, eighteen years. And I've been scoutmaster of the police counter-truth, I've been coach on SBI, you name it, I've been here. Hello, thank you.
Okay, I'm Jane Kabuta. I've been a resident of Somerville since nineteen sixty-nine. I spent a lot of time at the Y here in Somerville, I was the executive director. Originally from Woodspare, but I can say I've lived in Somerville longer than I've lived in Woodspare. So, I love the town and I'm on the Borough Council right now and it's just a great place to live.
Art Aiken's lifelong resident of the beautiful town called Somerville. I started out with the zoning board for a couple of years and then was asked to switch over to the planning board. I am happy to be part of it.
Al Karasik is a resident of Somerville for forty-two years. Have been involved with different boards. Started off, I spent, who, I spent thirteen years on the board of education and came over to the planning board about three years ago. Former director of radiology at Overlook, now retired. And this is a great town. I got hooked and no plans on leaving, in a vertical position.
You want to change your course.
Yeah, I was gonna say, see, our.
He gave his card.
Yeah, give this stuff first.
Jason Craska, been on the planning board for about four years. Before that, did a little stint over at the county planning board under Bernie as well. Previously did a few stints on council for a couple of years, I'm the chair of recreation in town. And born and raised right here in Somerville from Somerset Medical Center when it was still called that. And as everybody else said, so I'm not the only one who love this town.
I'm Andrea DeR, I've been a resident of Somerville for thirty-eight years. I'm married to that gentleman, hold it there. And I'm retired and I've been on the planning board about twenty years and of course, we love Somerville.
How about my wife?
That would be a wedding gift. That's it. That's it.
Okay, the reason we're here is, over the last couple of years, we've been getting applications before our board to convert office space into PORs to residential. And it just seems like every year we keep getting a little bit more. Michael's just put together a synopsis of the applications that we've had. Most of them have been approved. But Rich O'Neil, he keeps saying that, you know, we have to take a look at this POR zone. Something is changing and it was the business environment where now if you're a young tax accountant or something, you can just run your business from your car with a tablet and not a smartphone. So, we're seeing more and more applications to convert to residences. From an amateur tower changing to three apartments or offices to apartments a couple of years ago. To Don Storm's on West End Avenue, changing a whole medical arts building into apartment because nobody wanted to go in there. So, we wanted to take a look at it and see what's going on and what kind of recommendations we could get from the planning board. And to, everybody just sitting around talking, maybe come, something we could come up with to the mayor and council that they could change the ordinance so that the, we can make this a more smooth transition because we know we can see more. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anybody has the draft handout, I just put this together today. I can go back to oh-five, but started at oh-six. And we see there's very little activity. There was a subdivision that was denied in two thousand and eleven. Then you have Heather Hills, which is basically, it was an FAR variance, it was permitted use, but it was a multi, it was a family, so I listed it. But the activity really begins in two thousand and seventeen to the present where you see we had Nova come in for multi apartment building. And then we had a couple, in eighteen, you had a couple that was a, one of them was a two-family house that was converted to a single-family and they came back for a two-family. So, it was originally a two-family, so, it was approved. And one was two separate offices, and this is right on East Main, that they were completely separated. And it might have been a two-family at one time, but it was a medical office, I think two different doctors for a long time. And it was not, and he came in and said, I had everything separated, it was already separated, so that was approved. Then in nineteen, you see an amateur tower, so they came in, they had offices in the first floor, three or four of them, that they wanted to get approved for apartments. So, they got approved for apartments in the first floor. That was just basically infill. And then DDM, that was the old office building, it was a lab and that was approved for sixteen units, I think it was sixteen units there.
Came back twice.
Right, came back twice. First, it was for the upper story, big apartments and professional offices in the first floor. Then he came back and said there was no market. The realtor gets some testimony saying there was no market for the professional office and he requested the first floor be turned into one of two bedroom apartments, all fairly big, eight hundred thousand square feet, so that was approved. And then the Kovak one was an interesting one. It was originally a two-family. They went from the planning board to get approval for law offices, which the planning board gave. And then it was a partnership between Rob Wilson and, I forget, I guess Kevin Kovak. Rob became a judge, so, he was winding down, so he wanted to make his practice smaller, so he requested to go back to the two-family. So, they start off the two-family, went to professional offices, back to two-family. So, that was approved. And then Alaricee was, that was approved a few months ago. That was an application right on Grove Street, which was a professional office up and down. And I don't know if testimony wasn't, I think it was a single-family at one point. And then it was converted to professional offices. And then the testimony was, they were not having any interest in professional offices. So, the board recently approved for a two-family there. And we have to deal with the issue of a parking lot and getting green space, which we're dealing with. And isolation, in case you have kids, because there's an easement goes back to the Heather Hills. So, we're dealing with that right now. So, basically you have a lot of, there are two families in the POR that go back a hundred years, so they're there. So, it's not, and you have two families in the R1 and R2, which are just there. So, we've had some additions of two families. I didn't list them because they were there. They came in for additions in R1 and R2. I just listed what's happened in POR because that's what Rich O'Neil's focus was. So, this addresses, over the last sixteen years, what the board has seen in terms of multi-family applications.
Tony, you, you're busy in the POR, so, right? What are you gonna say? Maybe you have one, you know, across the street from there.
Yeah, and it hasn't been an issue, the transition. I, my office is on Grove Street between Cliff and Hyde. And when I, when I bought the building, nineteen seventy-eight, and there were very few offices there. The neighborhood needed a little bucking up. And as the street converted to a lot of offices, parking lots went in and buildings got cleaned up and I think it was very good for the neighborhood. There still are several two-family houses in that block. But, in general, the block looks much better than it did nineteen seventy-seven. Or seventy-eight. So, personally, I don't, I don't have a problem adjusting to market trends and putting, you know, if a building was a two-family, when I bought my office, it was a two-family. I put an office in downstairs and I still have an apartment upstairs. I didn't have any need to put offices upstairs. So, it was, it was a good fit for me. However, it's, it's just me now. I used to have people working in the office, now it's just me. I could probably do it out of my car. But, I don't have a problem going back to the two-family. And I don't have a problem, a lot, a lot of people are concerned about non-owner occupancy. And from what I've seen on Grove Street, I don't have a problem with that. I also think that, for instance, with the DGAM application on West End Avenue, you got an existing office building. I'd rather see people using it than having it sit vacant.
It's just quality, well, it's Don Storm. It's just the quality.
Right, but it, but just the fact that the market has changed so dramatically in the last couple of years that it's, it's difficult for building owners to find people to own the small offices.
Do you have any information on what the vacancy rate is for the office, first floor office portions in the POR zone? Does anyone study that at all?
I, I don't have the information. Construction office, Mike, they have to do CCOs. So, I, we jump the construction office down the cell and see if they have the information on the CCOs.
They, they won't have actual, somebody does.
Right, but you can see how many are happening on an annual basis. You're absolutely right.
Those aren't happening.
Right. And the other thing to bring up is we do have some conversions over the last, like Jim Demuro's old building that became a single-family. There are conversions in the POR going back to the single-family. There's been at least four of them in the last two years or three years. And single-family, there's no board action, it's permitted use. So, we do have some professional offices going back, being converted to a whole building for a single-family.
So, that's my, that's my question. When does it come before the board adjustment? If, 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 if POR is special as residential, when does it have to come before the board in order, if they're taking from office to residential, but still within the two?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was saying, I really, I believe, if, if it's a change of use, it might very well come before us, but if it's a, simply a site plan, it could be. Yeah, if, if it's, right now the POR allows for a mixed use of one apartment. Right. So, if it's that, in that keeping, the zoning board's not going to see it, the planning board's going to see it, it says it's a parking variance or something. If you want to go to a two-family in the POR, it automatically goes to the zoning board because it needs a use variance, two families not allowed.
Okay, so, two families are not allowed.
So, someone comes in for a construction permit to go back to a single-family. Right now, there is no board, any activity from any of those.
The only way we can get around that is if we use four and three standards, which allows for, and dwellings in that zone. When it comes before us, we start talking about density, intensity of use. Because one of the things is, the residential won't require as much parking as the office. So, now you've got a lot of the cat out there. Well, let's, let's tear some of that up because we have impermeable coverage standards that must be met.
Well, not necessarily that, is that if you end up, let's say somebody you don't cut once a bite, a house has got an office and an apartment. And well, we'll, we'll live, we'll make the apartment, or the office into the apartment, and when the upstairs don't pay, pay.
Yeah, yeah.
They are the ones that work with us and we're not cheap. You know, it just adds to the cost of the conversion, they have to, they do the whole, so it's faster, more adjusted. And it's another expense that comes in. Like the turf, you know, and I need to keep them covered. If somebody wants to buy a building in this house on the street, why would it be done?
And I think that's a conversation, right, you know, I've had over the years, you say when he first became chairman, his objective was to do whatever the zoning board, of course, the planning board, they handle a lot of things. But as I was just telling, I've got some apartments down the street and they just got a fifty by fifty lot with a house on it. Until you do something with the whole standards, then it'll get rid of the zoning board.
And this house.
Well, you don't want to make it a user friendly.
Yeah, that's, that's. Right.
Yeah.
I think in this, in this case, it would be a simple matter to change the zoning to allow up to two dwellings in a unit.
Apartments in a building.
But not, not necessarily all of the Arthur's standards, just change.
Change that one. They make, make a two-family house, a permitted use to the POR.
Would, would they have to rip up the new habit though? I mean, are you saying they, they still need their parking lot?
That would, that would be up to, up to code for them. They don't need the permanent coverage.
No, they would still have to meet the residential requirement.
They would be, they would be on me as opposed to coming here.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes.
Do you have any, over the, sorry, I mean, under the impermeable.
Yeah, under it, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Shouldn't we ask them to reduce the?
We have, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think that should be attached to the two-family thing to make sure we're not just splitting and convert the office to call it a day, I would say.
Well, as a reminder, we talked about how long ago we had a residential, some committee?
Yeah.
Seven years ago?
Yeah.
Just trying to make this less made and less expensive.
No, I totally understand that, yeah.
So, I'll play devil's advocate. If you start to get rid of all the macadam, and I'm just thinking about Bridge Street, Park Sepai, Grove, what do we do with the parking issue?
Parking, um, parking would go under the standard of the residential. Or the, uh, free parking spaces for a doctor or whatever, as in the professionals, just a bunch of them would, um, bedrooms. And so, a two-bedroom place for that, or three, three parking spaces.
The RSI. The RSI should be required. I mean, both the planning boards looked at this, we had the village application, Ross. It was a single-family house at the corner of Ross and Hyde. It got converted and approved by the board, a parking lot was put in for a real estate and abstractor. And then oh-eight, oh-nine happened and he ran out of business. And eventually, he came back to a, living spaces upstairs, the offices downstairs, and we dealt with how to handle the parking lot. So, in that application, I think one space was taken out, I love those, some striping just on. And Alaricee application, we had a situation where there was no green space, nothing for any kind of residential use, parking, anything. It was just a sea of blacktop. So, it was Dan's idea, which is a great one, to put green back there. So, I think it says in the resolution, you have to put a twenty-two by twenty-two green area for the fans of privacy. Because it's an easement to get to the other parking lot behind it, to other professional offices. So, as each driveway gets it. So, the boards do try to address this. The concern is how to address this, the boards on the phone.
Well, we're also seeing considerations like green space because you're never living near children.
Right.
Egres and egres, you have a situation where you don't, a youngster would be.
That's what came up, it has to be a barrier.
Right, right, traffic.
Correct.
So, may, you know, it made, it made great sense to do that and that's, you know, something we would want to be, you know, fine-tuning if you were in the board. If you want to make sure that some of those considerations were brought into play.
But that's not a typical lot, I think, after a month.
I agree.
It's a lot to predict, right, from just driving across the parking lot.
And then share, they don't have the shared parking, they never did share.
Yeah, it never did, it didn't. But the other ones, that's a big one, I think, that we can regulate a little more across the board.
Are, is the Borough due for a new master plan reclamation coming up? Because that's something we could touch on too, you don't want, you know, do it across the board. You, you provide your master plan as well as realizing the ordinance.
We didn't ask the master plan in two thousand and nineteen, two years ago.
Oh, okay.
And then on the POR, the master plan has to act at flexibility to where, right now, it says the residence has to be anywhere for. There's my English put in the master plan, it says the residence could be anywhere. Okay, so there's some flexibility in the master plan about, it doesn't have to be anywhere.
True.
So, the master plan does allow for flexibility.
But we should add the flexibility, because if you're two apart, you allow it there as opposed to the next.
Right.
Right, that's not something you would put in the master plan, you gotta say flex.
We put it in the ordinance.
That's something we want to address.
Yeah, you have to direct the ordinance without annoying absolutely. Or one, or one, right.
Or one, yeah.
For a single family, they'll put it, I think it's. Yes, sir.
Single family, I think they could do.
You can do the single family already.
Yeah, we're correct.
You just want to be careful because, you know, we have, the boroughers, I did read the master plan, it looked like everything was open, but I wanted to make sure, I'm the new guy in the box here, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't misreading it. This is, it certainly gives flexibility to us to be able to do what you're contemplating. You know, on the stakes, it shouldn't be a problem.
And it was not doing this.
Were you guys, Mike?
Yeah, I, I, again, I just go back, I'm thinking about spots. If you take Northridge Street from Maine going to High Street, across from the county, there's probably thirty spots behind there. And I think there's five or six buildings. If they all convert it over, you will lose all that parking. And to be honest, you know people are parking there, jumping in and out of the county quickly. Is there enough spots? Are there enough spots?
Well, the debt problem orders don't relate to my spots, they're in Somerville County.
It's not, but as you know, it's realistic. People jump to wherever there's a pay and sale.
Parking still is a premium.
But, well, we know from the county, though, like a lot of the county workers who park in the deck, they park these streets because they don't feel safe in the deck, that's the only way they got. But, um, so I think, you know, they might have to start using the deck that was built. Yeah, so, um, yeah.
Well, doesn't it seem reasonable to assume that, like you said, on, on Bridge Street between Maine and Hyde, that that's probably not going to grow residential, it's probably going to stay office space. It has, um, not up to date as it possibly could be, but I don't know.
Two families stand right now are so popular in town in conversion possibilities. They're, they're certainly in much more demand than it would be for an office building.
Yeah, right there in that boys' block area.
It's so close to the county downtown, I think that would be a lot there.
But it's still, they have some very nice gender structures there, though, that's what gives it, they can get at least two or three bedrooms out there.
You're also seeing premium rentals for residential speed by downtown, that's what the acting.
That's what the rental can get for, it's not what's in there now.
I can tell you personally, I'll get maybe two or three every few months, people asking to do exactly that and you say it's a use variance, if you need, they get turned off.
That's my thing, yeah.
Any, any use experience is a, a great bird because of God bringing playing testimony, sometimes engineering testimony, or traffic testimony, you were talking about, it's a, it's a, it's a heck of a bird. It's easy, I guess. It's pretty easy.
Yeah.
That's what they do there is, is, is door fight. They always took, there was a fundamental principle, I mean, my colleagues, it's always better to rezone by ordinance and not by variance.
Yep.
You know, we're granting a lot of these and it does appear to work, granting more, then I think the ordinance can be, can be tailored to meet the kind of applications you get. Or that you think you might get given economy. And that would be fine, frankly, it would make, uh, it would make everything, I think, work a little better. It probably would make your process, as you pointed out, much, much, much quicker. I think. We can probably handle this with a relatively simple change on Schedule A and, and a footnote.
Yeah, a footnote, I guess we'd have to address the, the concern of excess parking, right, the improvement cover. So, it'd have to be a condition about scaling the amount of parking spaces for two-family. I guess you'll need the zoning officer to remove excess parking or the cat.
Well, I think, I think it should be parking driven towards the two-family. I think the impermeable coverage is the issue.
That's the green space.
Right. So, so if they meet the impermeable coverage requirement for a single-family home, it should be okay. If they don't, they need to remove the blacktop to get.
If they don't, they need to remove the blacktop to get all that pressure.
I'm not saying it should not require parking.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. All I'm saying is that chances are converting an office to a two-family, there's going to be excess parking anyway.
Yep.
Roberta?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I wonder if, if we want to allow a conversion to two, to two families, do we run the risk of somebody trying to put a space that's really making a one or a two-bedroom space, try to squeeze in three bedrooms, or gonna make really tiny rooms?
What's going on anyway?
Well, it may be going on anyway, but it may not be particularly, particularly what we want.
We do on mixed-use buildings, but I don't want two-family structure down.
You know, if you think about the guy that we had on, um, West End Avenue, you know.
A lot of the older houses here in town have really tiny rooms anyway. And, uh, I mean, the apartment buildings that are going up now have costs bigger than some of my bedrooms.
No, I know. I mean, my bedrooms are only like eleven by eleven, uh, you know, my furniture barely fits in them. But, you know, somebody could kind of go crazy and try to do more than, than really.
I think some of that has to do with the apartmenting and.
Coding, I think, because there are coatings, coating coatings for certain things. I mean, we can't stop them putting up little wall buyers once.
Right, right, right.
Thing is done, but codes will limit you, there's fire egress codes that will affect, there's different coating that should keep it from becoming a wall and a little.
Okay.
Beautiful.
So what's going to determine the, the reduction of impervious surface? Is it going to be the impervious service, uh, surface portion, or is it going to be the number of parking required for those particular bedrooms?
Let's see.
Or they have to be both, or they can be both, then they have to.
They would have to meet all standards.
Right.
To figure out if that's our variance for one.
Right, yeah. Right now, I think it's the improvement, which, the, the class for improvement is, if anything else, essentially it's not grass, it's improvement. And I think it's thirty-five percent P O R. So what the chairman is saying is, if you exceed that thirty-five percent, you have to comply with that thirty-five percent. Otherwise, you can't do it without, I would say, for adjustment.
Or, I was, I was thinking even when we do a site plan, we're trying to make it really easy. So let's say there's, you know, there are really now a lot, and you can't quite make it work. They can come to, like, people are site planning waiver committee, rather than go before the whole board, or, you know, ten or something. Is there a way you can do a committee that can run that quickly?
I don't know if we can do that. I don't refer to our terminus, but, um, if, if there's a, a variance involved, you typically have not granted a waiver. So if, if they need a variance either for parking or for impervious coverage, they need a variance.
My concern is that some of those little sites are going to need that, and then it's going to be back to the problem.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that almost fall under a, a previous condition, they, and, you know, they come in, and it's not going to be the expense of the, the zoning board, but they can come in and just, you know, pre-existing condition, this is what I have.
It's still over a use variance.
Yeah, still varies that they have to, go through a board, which means they have to get the plan, I mean, if they're trying to make it easier, you're not making it easier if these little sites can't meet those two requirements. No, no, like, if you have an idea whether they can or not.
Just so we're on the same page. When you talk about one and two bedrooms, typically, that's under the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustment, period. So, because, and you can't use the term site plan because there's site plan exemption. So you can't say to a two-family, you need site plan because.
The statute.
The statute says there's site plan exemption.
Right.
So they go in front of the, the zoning board for side yard setbacks, they put addition on the side yard setback. All that stuff is going to the zoning board to look at the impacts. So, if you're looking for flexibility, run into the issue, if there's an improvement coverage, it's a C variance, and it's going to have to be kicked to the zoning.
So, but I'm thinking, I can't tell you how long about this, but if it's a two-family and they both have two bedrooms, it's really four bedrooms in the structure, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we're not looking at two bedrooms anymore, we're looking at four, and does that change its status as far as site plan?
No, it's still.
I would say that it does not change the status.
So they still have to come before the zoning board if they can't meet those two regulations?
Yeah, they, if they're over on the improvement, that's in the bulk table, so it'd be a C variance, and all those variances would get kicked to the zoning board. So if they say we can comply, then it would be no board action from any of them. It would be just, similar to how it's handled right now with a single family.
No, I totally get that. I'm just thinking of some of those sites on, on grocery or Northbridge, they're pretty narrow, they maybe have six parking spots in the back.
Right.
As it is, and we're in a, and if there's two-family in there, and they meet all the required parking and get rid of all the impervious, which is usually a really long driveway to the back, can they meet both those without coming before here, and we're not really solving the problem?
I think they'd have to, I, well, frankly, I think they'd have to get the variance. I think what the, I think the idea would be is make it not as ownerless a variance as, as some have had to get. You know, yes, probably a C, probably a C two, which, in my, in my experience, you know, as opposed to maybe something much more complicated, uh, that would, or, you know, that would, that would, that would take, we're sorry about this, that would take the board, uh, uh, you know, a lot more review, whether the board would have to review it a lot more intensively, and maybe have to make recommendations that are tough on the applicant. I mean, to some degree, you really can't, you really can't bypass, if something needs a variance, if you've got physical, physical limitations on the property, it's pretty hard to, to really bypass a variance. I mean, and that's what, that's what we've got, the C one, C two, four. I mean, if you want to make them permitted, the other side of it is that i- i- you could have, as one, one member has pointed out, you could have a lot of, uh, you have, you have some sprawl, you have some, you might have more development than you want. Uh, I mean, that's the great balance. You can't make, you can't make the, you can't make the particular requirements too, too tight, and yet you can't make them too loose. I know, you know, I know from talking to Mr. Adair, you know, there are certain overriding considerations that are very, very important to both boards. And that's one of the reasons why you have some of the, some of the conditions and structures that you have. You have to be careful of it. I think what I'm saying is that maybe make the procedure a little bit, uh, a little bit easier to work its way of work through. You start saying variances are needed, I.
No, I'm not saying variances are needed. I'm saying are we solving the problem by changing a thing? Yes, you can put in two families, but none of these properties will meet the.
That's, wow. How many, how many of those?
I could do that.
Would.
I mean, you guys gotta remember that the D O R was the buffer, and there were the big houses from the fifties. So a lot of these lots are large lots.
Maybe that's how we.
There's absolutely challenging lots in the P O R, absolutely, but I can certainly get that list for everyone to see how many lots, or, I'll, I'll use the term undersized, that's in ten thousand square feet, whatever, I think it's ten thousand in the P O R. How many lots in the P O R are under ten thousand? We can certainly get that information.
Because maybe that's what we regulate the sprawling of, is, okay, if you're already tight under property with parking and everything else, you still have to come to get the variance. But if you already meet all the standards, you know, if you have one of those big houses in P O R that can have a lot of land and, you know, detail.
Look, there's big lots and there's small lots. Why, why are we locked in? What's the P O R maximum improvement coverage, inferrable coverage?
I think it's thirty-five percent.
Maybe for the big lots, we leave it at thirty-five, and maybe for the small lots, we jump it up to fifty. Who knows? I mean, maybe do an inventory of all the places in, in P O R, in the P O R zone, and find out what you would need to make it more amenable to the people who want to converge to two families. So the big lots, big lots have a smaller improvement maximum, the, the smaller lots have a bigger.
Yeah, we can do that. That would be the bulk standards per, per individual lot. You would have two standards with the P O R, three standards would have big.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't really care about.
You get a lot of C one variances for small lots, that's probably what you're saying. And, and that, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what the original C variances are for. Where, where undersized, as, as, the, the undersized lot case, so it wouldn't be a problem. It would be consistent with the statute and probably just as consistent with our master plan.
If you look at the P O R zone, you travel through the whole zone, you've got every kind of lot you could think of.
Yeah.
That's, that's the way it happens, right?
That's the way it happens. And a lot, a lot of, we, we have, if it were a single-family house, you could probably think of it, but it doesn't really matter.
Yes.
But if you got a, you've got a mixed-use building, that's the question for the community. That's how it's going to matter.
Yeah, we don't want to, we want to make it less painful, or less painless, or painless.
Always.
We want to make it easier, but we don't want to lose control.
Right, exactly. So I just want to make sure that there are, that some of these lots will meet the, the requirements, or you're just going to have everybody back here again, that's my. So what Dan said, I think if we do a survey of C, if we use the standard of parking in, um, impervious coverage, then will he need it, or do we have to divide it into different?
That's what the zoning.
Different zonings before, and that's, that's all I was going to say.
Without having to get a use variance, the whole thing's a different ballgame. You know, because if that's where you need a planner, you might need to get an engineer for, for parking or impervious coverage.
You don't need a planner, traffic possibly, so much of that, that comes in a lot with use variances. And in the old towns I represent, and we're seeing applications like that, invariably considered, you could consider residential neighborhood. People want to know how their, why's it going to be impacted, traffic was a big part of that, they've got kids.
Right, but how it works right now is, if it's a one and two-family, the owner can do his own draw, so the board sees this all the time. So, for a, and we're talking about a parking improvement, they're all Cs, you don't need a professional planner.
Right.
And frankly, the zoning board doesn't see a lot of planners, it's a big use case. Typically, we're bending over backwards to get drawings that are, applicant can do them. So we work with the applicants, get the drawings, something that we can sign and deal with. So it's, it's, the professionals really, on a, on a one and two-family, there's a huge difference given on the quality of the drawings. They could be eight and a half by elevens.
If there's no exterior changes to the building, it's pre-existing, they.
Right, I mean, just so.
The C itself.
The board is, the zoning board is very, has a lot of flexibility and definitely sort of lot, for the, the family that comes in front of the board. Not to go crazy, like, if they have a survey from nineteen thirty, and a copy of the survey, I'll accept that, because.
Because it's what they think you're going to get.
So, what I'm saying is, in most applications, if they're not commercial applications, like the larys, the board you said, that's when we dealt with drawings, which were, and that was from a, were challenging drawings, to say. I'm just leaving at that, so, uh, there's a lot of leeway given on what you have to submit to the zoning board to keep, to keep things moving, because it's for residents.
Yeah, but what is the problem with the two-family is that, don't you technically need a professional set of drawings because you're not living in a second unit?
Even if you're renting it out?
One and two-family are, don't need to be professional drawings.
Even if they're renting, it's a rental.
Doesn't matter. If it's one and two-family, the owner can do his own drawings.
For, for the board or for construction?
For the board, it's not for construction.
I just don't.
For construction, it'd be, even if they have a U C C permit, I'll go for Ed on this, uh, you can get your construction permits with your own house, but it has to be owner occupied.
Yeah.
And there's an affidavit typically you have to sign, there's something, in about one or two years you have to live there, or something like that.
But two families, then you can go to the board with your own little sketch, but then when it comes to construction, you have to.
Right. Right.
I mean, we were saying that for professionals, we, we, we try, if you get a mom, if I get a mom and pop, and we get a lot of them, and, you know, I see where you're at here too. You know, we try to step in a little bit to the shoes of the applicant, try to say, okay, well, if I were in your shoes, this is what I would be, this is, this is what I'm presenting, and this is what we're trying to do more, and this is what we should be trying to do. And you'd like suggest that in course of presentation. We don't rewrite the application, but we try to make it work, and, uh, we're aligned for course of what the, uh, what the borough, what the borough's goals are. But that's kind, that, we're ready to, that's kind of what we're doing. I mean, you don't look at it slavishly saying, you know, well, if you're, if you've got a slight, you've got a slight deviation that, uh, you can't, you can't do something, or you've got to get some kind of order as relief. We're trying to work them in.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see if the person who did it can throw all, if, if they want to take it in all of us that are residential, in, in burden, that there's a criteria in there.
Like a checklist, yeah.
A checklist, if they can meet, they take the product, and the way they go, we never see it. And then I have to, I know we might make it easier for them, but to make them come here, that's not easy. It takes time, spending time, it takes months, and both are, you know, problems.
They just need a, so, checklist to get a building, right, is that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if they need all the, if they don't need a variance, they should be able to just.
Right.
Just like if they're converting into a second.
Yeah, how this process starts is they come in and need a zoning permit, and that's what typically happens. The zoning officer looks at it. If it complies, move to construction. If it doesn't comply, they give the application information to go to whatever board.
But if they come in here and say, I want, I want to take that all of that for the.
Right.
Parking there, the applicant, the whole, we'll show it.
What you're saying, Rich, is no one's, or you want the, that, the construction office to work with the applicant to find out what the goal is. So, find the path to get to that goal, as opposed to saying, no, this doesn't comply.
As opposed to saying, read our zoning book and figure it out, have that simple, if you're trying to do this, these are the requirements.
Right, no, no.
You know, plain and simple, rather than trying to figure it out on your own.
That makes tremendous sense, because, yeah, you, if the, if you, if you give the, the opportunity, more interaction, I mean, you give the opportunity to have more compliant applications and a, and ease, uh, you know, people with recent skids a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, right now, the ordinance we addressed is partially on improvement. Um, but about seven years ago, in the committee met, um, trying to make more flexibility, one of the outcomes were the improvement coverage. It's two honors. So if something in the ordinance is right now, if you're within five percent, and you use some stormwater management, it's acceptable. So, from the last five, eight years, I've met with four people, they get their roof meters to a street. So it says need with planner and so forth, but I, I do that for Bono, because we work with them to get done. It's come up with various flexibility, we're, we're going in that direction. Just so everybody knows that we have the improvement flexibility of five percent. If you don't increase the stormwater management, because the stormwater runoff is becoming a huge issue right now.
Well, Mike, I have a question on you. What was the P O R zone, what was, what was it, R two or R one, before the P O R was created? That's about thirty years, forty years?
It was changed back in the nineties.
What was, was the whole area all R two or all R one, or?
I don't know.
Was not, the whole zone was just not.
I don't really know that.
Well, no, that's what I was asking, is that would it be feasible to simply revert back to that? If this property was in this zone, and these were standards, it's R two, you have an R two standard.
There was all kinds of crazy zoning. West End Avenue was some to allow ten-story buildings.
Yeah.
Or one. I don't, we don't want to be back to that.
No, no, I just didn't know, like, some of the, some of the downtown.
Oh, I.
I think we can cover that with both.
The way this, why the P O R came is that the character, the beautiful houses, they want to preserve, and they're becoming uneconomical for one family to be in an eight thousand or seven thousand square foot house. So, to avoid tear downs, that's where the professional offices came in, to get flexibility to that space, the characters, to maintain, and it made more economic sense.
And there was a demand.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It's like, well, in many cases, we're doing doctors' office, uh, doctors' office is in his house. So I'm lost, you're Dr. Sanders. Lost to you, right, not to, not to it.
So what's the procedure of those?
Well, I, well, I'd like to make a recommendation that, that we asked Mike to modify Schedule A appropriately, and circulated to both boards for comment. We'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Can you do the, can you do the survey on the different types of lots, so we can see that also?
I want a Google survey, I want to walk around.
Yeah, let me see if I can get the lots, to see how many conform versus don't conform.
Yeah.
I can certainly get that.
I mean, you could use a, yeah, quick survey.
You were asked about procedures. You were going to ask about procedures. If we're going to do anything that's going to do to change the boundaries or affect, change or affect the boundaries, you know, we might have to do it on public notice, but it doesn't sound like we're doing, it doesn't sound like we're doing that here. If you're just modifying the schedule, uh, I don't believe, I want, I'm, I'll, I'll be happy to check it, but I don't believe you would have to go through the, the notice for all property owners with two or a few of the boundaries of the zone. So I don't think that would be a big, a big issue. I mean, it would not cost you a lot of, uh, time or, or money.
Yeah, the normal procedure would be that if you get consensus language and anybody's comfortable with it, the planning board would make a recommendation to the council. And the council then can thoroughly vet it and choose to act on it or not act on it.
Yeah, they'd introduce it, send it back to you for review, play it over for review. Have the public hearing and it's totally defined.
It would be, it wouldn't change anybody's life who already in there, right? So these are the, like, they have a lot of things in their zone. It's like changing, it wouldn't affect anybody there.
And that's why we wouldn't have to do that, that additional notice, because that could be a nightmare.
What we're basically doing is trying to incorporate more flexibility, so it's not more honors. It's only going to be a little clearer and hopefully beneficial for, it'd be great to get a hundred percent, hey buddy, you can do this. But all we can do in reality is whittle down what needs board action and what doesn't.
Let people know the rules are.
Right.
And simplify things greatly.
Yeah, for, for the lot owners, it's going to be making it easier for them to make their particular piece of real estate and, and building easier to rent or use or whatever. It's not going to make them more difficult, so I would imagine we'd get very little, um, pullback from the lot owners.
What I've found is that it encourages those who really would want to do it to, if they have to do something and if their property is a little compliant, they'll do it. They'd rather sink their, they'd rather sink their funds into that and sink their funds into, into frankly, attorneys and plan.
And if they want to go back to offices, that's what regulations they, they go back to the parking rates for an office.
Right, they, if they, if they went back, they'd have to go, essentially go back to whatever the applicable regulations are for a commercial or a non-residential use. And, and I will tell you, that, that, that sometimes does happen. I represented Perk Amboy for many years and they had that, they've had that back and forth. The Bronzer also had that issue, they, a lot of it's the effort flow of the economy. But right, right now, you need more residential uses than, than an office or commercial. And just, we have a housing crisis in the state of Portland, it's a crisis. So it makes sense. Anybody else?
I'll just go back to something I would say early on, vacant property does nobody any good. It doesn't do the land, the owner any good, it doesn't do the neighborhood any good. It's a broken window syndrome. You know, a young couple who is just starting out, which we all are. Or, okay. A three hundred dollar a month mortgage seemed like a monster at the time. It was, and now it's.
It's crushing money.
But, no, I, I think that.
I think you're going to get a couple of secondary exits.
Yeah. I, I think so. You have an income producer upstairs, you have a, a nice place downstairs and maybe eventually you buy a single family home and you keep that as a, as a family rental or a commercial property. I think that, as the attorney said, we'd rather see people spend money on improvements than on paper.
That's, that's what I have found to occur and I'm, and I encourage when I see that, because that's really, you want to get things that, I mean, it's one thing for Michael because he's the planner and that, that, what he does is integral. Try to keep people like me out of, out of the, out of the equation because, not, not that we, not that we are big troublemakers, but it costs money and, and it alongates, makes the journey that much longer. So, but let me do it. Bring it, bring it.
So the recommendation was to change the schedule and to do the survey?
Give the lot information, change the survey, let me come up with some cleverness, but hopefully, this is the whole room here, uh, some language that addresses the spirit of it.
So we're not making any decisions about anything for that. We're all taking a look at it and then. Well, it's, you know, at my, at my very first meeting, which was on Zoom, I know that Mr. Neal was pointing to saying, this is something we have to happen, we have to happen. That was a terrible word, so now we're looking at, you know, we're looking at October coming up, so it's been, you know, eight months and.
It's government at fourth speed.
That we're all together, you know, doing that, so I think this is a great thing. I would encourage this kind of means. Our guy wanted to wait until we do it face to face instead of on Zoom.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
I think it's an excellent. With a group this size, the Zoom labs, we, we're small and those of us who apply for this, this is my. Interactions is, is create success, really makes it.
The only complaint I have is that we have tiny board members, board adjustment members, we have council members here, we have attorneys, we have our engineer planner here, we don't have a zoning official. You should be here. You know, we have twenty-five people here.
Yeah, that's, I agree with you.
That's going to start happening.
I agree with you there.
We went through that argument, um, a couple of years ago, it's going to start happening. We'll talk, yes.
That's it? Well, nothing else to come before the board?
Other questions?
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Anybody else from the board have any questions or comments? Something like you from Germany? Paul, favorite?